The flags.
Yeah.
Flash codes.
Yeah.
All right, would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I would like to welcome you all to our new digs. Jody, could you call the roll, please?
Dennis?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
Hallenbaugh?
Here.
Odericio?
Here.
Phipps?
Here.
Robinette?
Here.
Rabando?
Here.
Okay, the minutes from our last meeting, which was June 29th, were distributed for your perusal. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay. Correspondents, do we have any correspondents?
Yes, we have two items this evening. The financial budget summary report for June 2023 was received and distributed to council prior to this evening's meeting and is noted for the record. Also received from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control was an application for a C1, C2 liquor permit for Snag Delivery Incorporated, 530 East Worcester Street. Records were requested.
Okey dokey. Do we have anyone signed up for lobby visitation this evening?
We do. Ready? Mary Hinkleman?
Good evening, everybody. Mary Hinkleman, Bowling Green Chamber of Commerce, 217 South Church Street. And I didn't do this on purpose to be the first person to speak to you in here, but wow, I'm kind of honored. I actually had asked Jody if we had had a meeting since BG Boom happened on July 3rd, because I didn't want to... Thank you all again for the wonderful support I received from the city, Public Works, the Fire Department, the Police Department, and all of you for agreeing to give us higher financial support for BG Boom. You know, that move out to the fairgrounds on the Tractor Pools property has really, really come to fruition. I cannot believe the organizations that became involved this year and after the event even more said, hey, can we get in there? Can we help with the festival? So I'm looking forward to next year. And on top of that, the fireworks were astounding. Thirty-five minute show. I know Lori and I were like, oh my gosh, they're so high, my neck hurts. It was great. It was great. And it ended with a group hug, and I just want to thank you all. We have started working on holiday parade, so we'll be knocking on your doors soon. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Damon Sherry?
Hi, council. Beautiful new building. So tomorrow is the August special election, and issue one is on the ballot. Issue one would move Ohio away from the simple 50-plus 1% majority into a 60% majority actively ending majority rule. Even after the state banned the August election because of cost and historically low turnout, they have decided to bring it back while making the Board of Elections throughout the state heavily unprepared. On its own, issue one would make it nearly impossible for Ohioans on either side to pass constitutional amendments. It would also increase the number of signatures and counties needed, while also removing the 10-day cure period for petitioners to gather additional signatures if not enough were validated upon review. Both Democratic and Republican governors and state attorney generals, as well as lawmakers across the state, have come out against issue one. We are one of the handful, few handfuls of states that allow citizens to have the power to put its constitutional amendments on the ballot when our constitution and elected officials fail to meet the needs of the moment. Therefore, I am urging issue one to be a vote no, as well as urging City Council to pass Resolution 3848, with issue one, the minimum wage, home rule, and others would have failed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's it.
Okay. How unusual. All right, that brings us to the introduction of new legislation.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
From the Finance Committee, I have a resolution appointing the representative and alternate to serve on the Board of Directors of the Buckeye Ohio Risk Management Agency, BORMA, and an ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2023, and ending December 31st, 2023.
Mr. President.
Ms. Phipps.
From the Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee, I have an ordinance authorizing a no-build easement in John Quinn Business Park, as well as an ordinance amending Sections 150.85, 150.87, and 150.89 of the codified ordinances of the City of Bowling Green.
Mr. President.
Mr. Rabando.
From the Parks Recreation and Public Lands Committee, I have a resolution authorizing the City of Bowling Green to participate in local park improvement grant program and to file an application and accept grant funding upon grant application approval.
Brings us to official reports. Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, councils. Good to see you all again. This is a different vantage point. This is really different, isn't it?
Yeah.
I don't know about you, but it feels pretty great to be sitting here today. I just wanted to take a couple of minutes and express my gratitude to a number of people. First of all, our citizens for their patience as we have gone through the construction of this building and the move from the old building into this building, and also for their ongoing patience as we now begin the demolition of the old city building and renovations to the parking lot. We're mindful of the fact that it's not easy to get to us right now. We're making every effort to communicate consistently changes to the construction process or to the access plan of the building. We're trying to... Joe and Public Works people are doing a really great job of getting signage out there to try to direct people to the proper place. I think maybe with the demolition activities of today, it will become a little more clear that we're now located in this building as opposed to the other one. So again, just really grateful for the public's patience, you know, as we undergo this process. Also thankful for staff and their patience. It was, you know, again, it was a pretty monumental task moving from old building into new, and staff has been very patient, very accommodating. I think they're settling in and beginning to recognize the benefits of this new building. I know that I see pretty frequently staff engaging with members of the community in first-floor brightly lit and accessible spaces, and I think that it's proving already to be beneficial to both of those parties, our residents and our staff. So again, I just want to say thank you and express my appreciation for everyone as we're moving through the process. Finally, I did want to note, as had previously been noted, that tomorrow's Election Day. We don't often vote in August, but I want to encourage everyone, if you haven't already, to get out and vote. I continue to contend that casting a vote is one of our most important civic responsibilities. So I want to urge everybody, regardless of your feelings on the issue, to get out and vote. It's really important that we do that. If there is any questions about polling locations, Board of Elections' website will have that information, but just want to make sure that everybody goes out and exercises that very, very important right that we have in the United States. So that concludes my report. Subject to any questions that you might have.
Does anyone have any questions for the mayor? Thank you very much. Municipal Administrator, Ms. Tredder.
Good evening, council. Just to elaborate a little bit more on the mayor's comments, the transition in terms of operations has been very successful here to the new building, and staff is settling in well. Citizens are learning to navigate the new space, and we'll continue to offer assistance and support. That new parking lot is still a couple months away while that construction is going on next door, so we'll continue to put updates out in the city newsletter and in other venues with the media to keep citizens updated on our progress. We did have a disruption last week that you may have read about with our communication system, where we had a networking issue that resulted in the city not getting email. We had several disruptions to our phone system. I want to note that our staff really rose to the occasion. It was a very challenging situation we found ourselves in last week, and staff worked very cohesively to find alternative ways to continue serving the citizens. Where deadlines occurred for billing or so forth, you know, we extended things accordingly. They looked at creative and effective ways to reach out to folks, and all areas adapted and responded as appropriately. In some cases, we did actually institute some emergency protocols, like in the police division, to make sure our phone systems were up and running. And again, you don't want to be testing those systems, but when the opportunity arises, it is a surefire thing to know that they are effective. Our citizens were also very patient with us as we went through that process. I would be remiss if I didn't mention our IT staff, though. Our folks worked literally around the clock to address this issue, and they performed amazingly well under intense pressure. They understood that the operations were being impacted by this problem, that the citizens were being impacted, and they were devoted, they were dogged, and they did get the issue resolved. We do note that it was an issue that I'm not going to try to describe the technical side of things. I will get it wrong, but my understanding is that we applied a regular patch that does occur, and as that occurred, that started a cascade of problems that then got into, as they called it, a traffic loop that just went around and around. So we were able to get that fixed after a few days, and we are back up and running with a few minor threads, you know, things still being tied up here to recover from that. But again, kudos, we do have somebody from IT down here in the blue shirt, Eric, representing our division. But Chris Lovelace, our IT manager in particular, led his group with just outstanding professionalism, very, very proud of my colleagues in an intense situation. That completes my report. Subject to your questions.
Are there any questions for Lori? Thank you very much. City Attorney, Mr. Brown.
No report.
Any questions for Mr. Brown this evening? Okay. Public Services Director, Mr. Fawcett.
Good evening. I don't generally do this, but I want to echo what Lori said about IT's great work over the last few days. To say that they worked around the clock, she literally means that they worked around the clock. So to Eric and the rest of the staff in IT, hats off to you. We are very thankful that you are here. From Public Services, in light of some of the recent activity within City Park, I asked Kristen for an update on the security camera project that's been ongoing throughout the year. Some cameras have been placed, and those cameras are proving to be helpful. However, not all of the cameras have been placed to date. As you might imagine, the Electric Division is doing the work, so when priorities shift a little bit, staff and crews get pulled off, and they come back to it when they have time. So in a true testament to who Jon Stewart is, he's attuned to what's happening in the news, and he is diverting some resources back over to the park here this week, as well as next week, to continue the installation of those cameras, so that is ongoing. Last year, they were successful in adding additional cameras overlooking the middle part of the park, so now they're going to focus on more of the Stone Shelter skate park area. And subject to any questions that you might have, that completes my report.
Are there any questions for Mr. Fawcett? Thank you very much. Public Infrastructure Director, Mr. O'Connell.
Thank you. Just an update on our water treatment plant, low service pump station project. We did receive news from the Ohio Department of Development that we were selected for a grant of $1.18 million. So we'll team that up with the EPA loan that we were anticipating on applying for to fund that project, which that will reduce the amount of money we need to borrow then to pay for that project. The grant runs through the end of December 2024, so we have until that time to, you know, get the project or get that money spent. So we did get with our consultant to make sure we get this project expedited and, you know, out for bid as soon as possible. Don't want to take any chances with losing the grant money, but that was a good news to receive that from the state. We've also done some, started some design work at the wastewater plant for the clarifier project to add that at the facility. It's going to be a long-term project, but that is getting started. An update for the Village Waterline project. We did submit the loan application to the EPA. We also submitted design plans to the EPA for their review and approval. So as soon as EPA says that the project's okay to go out for bid, we will get that out on the street and get a contractor under wraps. The relining work that we're doing in town does also include some streets in the village, and we did get those contracts, or we're getting those contracts signed this week. Last shout out to Eric, since everybody else was on the bandwagon. We did have a meeting with Abbott. They came to town last week, and during the IT issues, Eric found a solution for us to continue to allow to have that meeting in the building, and that meeting went off pretty seamlessly. So Eric, I appreciate your help for stepping up and filling that gap for us. So he did great. Really appreciate Eric being here. That's all I have, unless you have other questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. O'Connell? Thank you very much. That brings us to council committee reports. Do we have any council committee reports?
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
Immediately prior to this meeting, the Finance Committee met and received the second quarter report from the Finance Director. There were no issues or concerns expressed by any member of the committee.
Okay. I would also just like to make an announcement at this point that council's annual strategic planning meeting is going to be on Monday, September 11th at 6:00 p.m. in the conference room adjacent to council chambers, unless it's incredibly well attended, in which case it will spill out into this room. So... Anyone else have any council committee reports? Okay. That brings us to the reading of legisla... Jody?
Legislation for first reading. Resolution number 3850 for first reading. Resolution appointing the representative and alternate to serve on the Board of Directors of the Buckeye Ohio Risk Management Agency, BORMA. Resolution number 3851 for first reading. Resolution authorizing the City of Bowling Green to participate in the local park improvement grant program and to file an application and accept grant funding upon grant application approval. Ordinance number 9117 for first reading. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2023, and ending December 31, 2023.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
I move to suspend the rules and give ordinance 9117 its second and third readings.
Second.
Okay. Properly moved and seconded. Jody?
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odericio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Rabando?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended for ordinance 9117.
Ordinance number 9117 for second and third readings. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2023, and ending December 31, 2023.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
I move to adopt ordinance 9117.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jody?
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odericio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Rabando?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
All right, ordinance 9117 is adopted.
Ordinance number 9118 for first reading. Ordinance amending Sections 150.85, 150.87, and 150.89 of the codified ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Ms. Phipps.
We need to set the required public hearing on ordinance 9118 for Thursday, September 7th at 6:00 p.m.
Okay.
Ordinance number 9119 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing a no-build easement in John Quinn Business Park. Legislation for second reading. Resolution 3848 for second reading. Resolution urging Bowling Green residents to vote no on issue one on or before August 8, 2023.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dennis.
I move that we suspend the rules and give ordinance Resolution 3848 its third reading.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Jody?
Odericio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
No.
Rabando?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
No.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes. All right, so the motion fails.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dennis.
I move that we postpone Resolution number 3848 indefinitely.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would just like to point out that with this resolution, it was, you know, brought forward in a time that really could only be brought forward because the Supreme Court had to actually rule.
Point of order, Mr. President. Discussion is limited to the motion, which is to postpone indefinitely.
Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, so on June 16th, the Ohio Supreme Court had to rule that this election was even constitutional, because as you may recall, earlier in the year, Ohio Republicans enacted a law that banned August elections. So we had to wait until that ruling actually came out to find out if we could even have this election. So when Councilman Dennis introduced it, it was the first time we could possibly introduce it, which gave us that shortened time period as to why we are trying to vote on it now, considering that the election is tomorrow. You know, again, we're spending millions of taxpayer dollars here on an election to take away the freedom of Ohio voters. So I think it's extremely important that people are able to hear about this election and realize why they should be voting no. Think, you know, it's not a partisan issue. It's opposed by the League of Woman Voters, the Fraternal Order of the Ohio Police, the Ohio Association of Professional the Ohio Association of Professional Firefighters, the Ohio Nurses Association, the Ohio Federation of Teachers, and, as we heard, Republican and Democratic governors and Secretaries of State. So that is all I have to say on the issue, and I guess we can, you know, suspend it indefinitely to put a bow on it.
Okay. Postpone indefinitely.
Postpone indefinitely.
Any other... Any other discussion? Okay. Hearing none? Jody?
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Rabando.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hallenbaugh.
Yes.
Odericio.
Yes.
Okay. Resolution 3848 is postponed indefinitely.
Resolution Number 3849 for second reading. Resolution urging Bowling Green citizens to decide for themselves how to vote on Issue 1.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
I move to postpone indefinitely Resolution 3849.
Second.
Okay. It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay. Jody?
Robinette.
Yes.
Rabando.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hallenbaugh.
Yes.
Odericio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Okay. Resolution 3849 is postponed indefinitely.
Ordinance Number 9115 for second reading. Ordinance for Cleaning of Streets by Special Assessment. Legislation for third reading. Resolution 3847 for third reading. Resolution authorizing the filing of applications with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the U.S. DOT Federal Transit Administration, FTA, as authorized under federal transit laws as codified 49 USC Section 5311, formula grants for rural areas, Ohio's Rural Transportation Program and/or the Ohio Transit Partnership Program, and executing a contract for the FY 2024 through 2025 Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program, and 5339 and/or 5311, funding for capital and/or operating assistance and the Ohio Transit Partnership Program, and executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon project approval.
Mr. President.
Mr. Harold.
Two things. One, well done, Jody. That's like one of the longest ones. And second, I move that we adopt 3847. Resolution 3847.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jody?
Rabando.